All right, I'm gonna call the December 11th, 2018 meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to run from all of you in attendance. It was a pretty beautiful, magnificent trip coming down from Highlands, watching the weather change from five foot, over a foot of snow, well at the city limits to virtually nothing by the time you get to the city limits of Franklin. So to see that progression and just kinda shows the topographic diversity of the county that we live in and all call home. And it's definitely a pretty special place. Do we have any announcements? Okay. All right, we'll saw rise and observe a moment of silence and all of us, Commissioner Shills will leave some place for later.
Oh, man. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we're gonna move right on into our public comment period. Norrell Kirkland, preserve our ambiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I'm going to show this to the audience before I address you all. Now, you might think I am here tonight to talk about how I helped form the Wesley Playground when it was originally built, maintain the Greenway, work on maintaining part of the Appalachian Trail before I got injured, even the Peak's Creek video, just to give Mr. Gillespie a background on me. But you all know me well enough to know that I just love Macon County and intend on dying here. It's just the place to live. So tonight, I'm going to focus on what good you guys have done. If you go to the end of East Main Street, there is almost a whole community below the Integra Bank headquarters with doctor's offices, and I even went to the health place to try and rehabilitate after my operation four years ago. Now we have an old folks home. You go to the swimming pool area and that formerly empty area is now the wonderful Smoky Mountain Performing Arts Center with a restaurant. Do any of you recognize Mr. Grady? This is the sawmill before you redid Sila Road. And now look at what that encompasses with Walmart, new homes for a whole bunch of people. And even if people were upset initially about things changing, look at the good that it's Does anybody here remember this area? This is where you used to go to drive-in theaters, Frog Town, and now Phil Drake has three, building a fourth structure. So think of all the employment and the education that you brought to our county. I am so grateful for what you commissioners and your predecessors have done, grateful until this August. That's when Duke Energy started putting in great big tall towers to replace the wooden telephone poles, saying that the capacity had been exceeded and this was the way to go. They were very smart. They did it along road sides that you don't think of except as corridors to and from town. But all of a sudden, two weeks ago, when the traffic was stopped and you started cutting oak trees and hickories and maples right here through prime thoroughfare of town, gentlemen, your great-grandfathers rode past those trees magnificent even then, when they would come to town to give their produce. I am very distressed that you have allowed this to hurt the image of Franklin, because people do come here as tourists for the image. You could've gone to Duke and said, "For heaven's sakes, why don't you take the millions of dollars you're spending on all these towers and put up a windmill behind Walmart on that hill?" Or even go to Jim Vanderwood's land that abuts the Greenway that he wants to sell. It's south-facing, you could've put solar panels there. So I'm very distressed to lose these trees. And before I turn my back as a public protest to you, I want to urge you, the ambiance of our county and our town, it really needs to be preserved. Please don't make this mistake again.
All right. I'm leaving it all. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if we could remove out a 9A fiscal year 2017-18 presentation, period of the weather, all of you are probably able to travel here tonight.
I understand 11C is being removed also.
11C is also being removed out of the control of the 2018 F.I.R. prevention code. And also, if we wanted to replace 9A, just wanted to give the board a brief update on the weather event statistics from this weekend, as well as if we could add a 9C to talk a little bit about the tier designation. Talk about our change in tier designation.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner? Mr. Attorney?
All right, we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sub moving, Chairman.
A motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right into reports and presentations. I know we discussed the weather events last Monday. I guess we're gonna get an update on where we stand with that and probably an update on where we stand as a county. Ms. Warren, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Obviously, all of you know the winter event that we experienced over the weekend, and if you still live in one of those areas that's still experiencing the impacts, particularly electrical outages, you might not necessarily agree with me, but it could've been much worse. The situations that we've seen, particularly on West Oak Murphy Road, Scanty Mountain, and Highlands areas, if those had been countywide, the impacts would've been way worse for us as far as recovery. As far as damages, we've found, most of the damages that we've seen, there's been a few roof damages, a few vehicle damages from fallen trees, but most of the damages have been the utility lines themselves that have experienced problems over the last couple of days. The latest numbers that we've got, Duke Energy's down below 1,000 customers that are without electricity tonight. Town of Highland was down to 50 or less this morning, and the Haywood Electric folks that are in the Scanty Mountain area and the backside of the Otto area is down about the 500 mark. So we're somewhere around 1,600 folks that are without power, which is still a lot of folks, but compared to the 8,000 or so that we had Sunday morning, that's a pretty good improvement. So we've been really pleased with those folks. Over the course of this, there's a lot of numbers that you can look at. There were at least 13 welfare checks that either law enforcement or emergency services of some sort conducted over the course of this. To check on folks, it may have been a call from a neighbor or a friend to say, "Hey, I'm concerned about so-and-so, I can't get a hold of him." You know, most of those, we get there and it's a phone problem, we couldn't get out. One gentleman had an issue with getting his gas logs lit. So a lot of that was just some checking on some folks, make sure they're okay. We coordinated our sheltering efforts with Bob Burke and Macon New Beginnings over the course of the weekend. We had several conversations with him about his processes and our processes. We just got some numbers from him as of about 30 minutes ago. There were seven different folks that were housed in hotels or motels over the whole course of this event. So that's a success for us. Number one, we got those folks taken care of. They helped us immensely to take care of those folks, and no more than that many folks actually needed assistance during this whole event. Biggest thing we had to deal with through 911 is fallen trees. We had at least 60 reports, 60 individual reports of those over the course of about two days, and that's only a drop in the bucket, because there's many more out there that weren't reported. Your 911 center, and this reflects back on not just the 911 center, but agencies that they dispatch for, which is your law enforcement, your fire, and your EMS. We read some numbers comparing last Sunday, which was kind of a normal Sunday for us, compared to this Sunday, and there was about a 250% increase in the number of calls that we actually cadded, which means we actually had to dispatch a unit on. It wasn't just phone calls, we actually had to send somebody out on them. So that's a pretty significant increase for a 24-hour period. The other number of significance is the number of incoming phone calls that we processed, which this number is a lot higher, and you have to remember that for every incident that we have, particularly with a vehicle accident or something else, we may get three or four phone calls on it. So you may have multiple phone calls coming in to report one incident that had one report. We had about a 450% increase in the number of telephone calls that were intaked, that were entered into the system on Sunday. And our busiest time was about 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning, and at that point, we were processing about one call a minute. We were a little less than one call a minute. The average wait time on the ring times was about four and a half seconds somewhere in the neighborhood, so we were fairly effective even with the volume coming in to manage those. And the real success over that whole thing is the fact that we had zero calls that were queued up, which meant that the 911 system was actually busied out and nobody was there to answer the phone. So just those numbers alone tells you the volume of stuff that went through there and that these agencies had to respond to over the course of that event. So we were very pleased with those folks. Obviously, it's still significant for a lot of folks. Some folks still don't have electricity tonight, but we have recovered very well, and if we look at some of our neighbors to the east, they are still not faring as well as we have. If you look to the west, they, some of them don't really know that a whole lot of anything happened, so we were kind of in the middle, but all things considerably fared.
Did I hear you on the radio?
Occasionally.
You take calls too?
Occasionally, yes. Any questions or anything else?
Good job, Warren.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I know we received two or three emails here in the past few days about making sure we take care of homeless people. Have you spoken with Macon New Beginnings? I, Warren, just mentioned, you said they'd taken how many calls?
They actually processed seven folks over the course of the storm, which was, I think, heat began his time of Saturday morning and ran it through yesterday.
Yesterday. If you, and just for some reference, 2015, the most people that Macon New Beginnings placed in an emergency shelter in one month was 24. The most in an entire year has been 65, just to give you a point of reference on the number of folks that they helped during this event. I think if that points to one thing, it does point to that there is plenty of capacity out there with agencies like Macon New Beginnings to help those that are in need of help during an event like this, which is a great thing.
But, Mr. Chairman, let me add something to that. We worked really well with those folks over the weekend. We made contact with them early to make sure that they had their needs met and we would coordinate the efforts that we had with the requests that came in. We had a process in place through the 911 center with some DSS folks and with their folks to process those overnight over the weekend and through this whole event to make sure that those got routed to the right place. There's always a lot of questions about opening shelters. I actually checked the capacities of shelters to the east of us. It was actually yesterday morning. Bunkham County and Henderson County had 23 people in their shelters combined.
Bunkham County?
Bunkham County and Henderson at that time, they only had 23 combined in their shelters. Now, with the capacities that Macon New Beginnings is talking about and the potential we had for at least the 14 welfare checks that we conducted, once we get to about eight or 10 family units, putting them in the hotel or motel room, that's when it becomes a little more efficient to open a physical shelter somewhere. If you've got available rooms, it's a lot more efficient for us and for the system to put those people somewhere that already has heat in the bed and everything's already taken care of than it is to try and stand in one of those shelters. Now, we will do it when we have to, but at some point, it's just more economical and it's a much more efficient process to house them like that. And we would've probably stretched this a little more. Usually, our number's eight to 10, which meets, that's typically what the American Red Cross says is the threshold to start opening. We would've probably stretched it a little more, because as you know, Highlands is different from down here as far as the weather. School was back in session here, so then we have to work around using the school facilities, so therefore, we would've probably stretched that a little more if we'd had used to be more open.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. Well mentioned, in Highlands, while we're on this discussion, I just got a text that Highland School is only three hours delayed on, so I'm sure my kids will be excited. Just to further the conversation on that, any other commissioners, I'd love some insight on that. Derek and I have spoken briefly about, Derek, can you refresh my memory on maybe establishing maybe sort of guidelines or maybe something that we can look at as commissioners on how we might handle an extreme weather event in the future?
Yeah, and I-
How we might be able to find something, some assistance, where we might go?
Right. Well, we looked at, you know, the guidelines we have in place, which, you know, we follow the state building code, our local emergency management policies, as well as those guidelines established by the American Red Cross. And as Warren said, you know, it becomes so important in an event like this to have a system in place that emergency management's talking to the folks they need to talk to and coordinating efforts to be as efficient as possible. And I think that we're doing just that right now with, as Warren has just alluded to, with this event. I think, you know, it really shows that year after year, and you know, this, of course, this winter event was not the first winter event nor the worst winter event that we've ever had, but year after year, this system that has been formed and is in place has been proving itself to be very efficient and very effective. And I think, you know, as we move forward, I know Warren has budgeted funds that can be used to assist those folks that are indeed during a time like this in the emergency management, and he and his staff do a great job. And I think, you know, the results and the report we just heard from him are a testament to the system that we have in place is definitely working.
Questions, any questions or comments on that?
If you remember, the Healthy Carolinians did a report, I guess it's been, we talked about today at MPP, I guess that report was out in probably 2012, '13 about homelessness in Macon County. And if you go back and look at that report, of course, things change. Our object then was to find out why are they homeless? I think that's just as important. If they're homeless when it's 17 degrees, they're gonna be homeless when they're 82 degrees. So why are they homeless now is the question? That's another question that we need to find out. Is it, it could be numerous things. Are they new to the area? Is it because there's no housing available? But that goes along with, you know, is it, these folks had to come, one was because of the power outage. You know, I'm sure some of that would just due to the power outage. So I think if we move ahead and as we look further into this, I think the Health Department did that, Cax McGah had that effort when there was a Healthy Carolinians. I think Derek will remember that well, and Warren will remember that report. And it wouldn't, I think it would behoove them to go back and refresh that report. I think that the legwork has been done and there's a template for that. Do you remember that report? And, because it really delved into why, and I think that's the question is, you know, why are they homeless? Is it due to housing, due to lack of job? Are they new to the area? Do they have some kind of substance abuse, mental health? What is it? Why are they homeless? And there's some things in place to help, help most of those things. You know, I think that, so whatever this board needs to look at from there, if they're homeless now, they're gonna be homeless in the summertime too. So, but, I mean, during bad weather, I think there's a good plan in place, or church is willing to help out also. But I think certainly during this event, and we've got a lot of winter to go yet, Mr. Chairman, I think that EMS and our folks have done a great job.
Yeah, kudos to you, Warren. Been on top of it, my fire departments, the Emergency Services, 911. I've been just listening on the radio, just been right on top of things. It's certainly a comfort, to say the least. Let me end by saying this. I took some time today to go visit a shelter that takes care of some homeless people, because I wanted to see firsthand, get a feel maybe of what they're dealing with and how they do it, and how the shelter might handle it. I can just say it was very sobering, to maybe say the least, to see what some people are dealing with, and that you're struggling and trying to move forward with your lives. I think that was good, to really give a little better understanding for me personally, and we'll definitely be thinking about it as we move forward. Moving right along, item B. Anything else before I move forward?
Revaluation update, Tax Minister Mr. Richard Liederman. Welcome, Richard.
Well, the time of talk is over, so I guess I can say Merry Christmas. Compared to the last two, you know, we lost like 25% of our value, that one revout, one we put off because it didn't have sales and we had an eight-year cycle. Things have rebounded. This presentation, some of it, followed along with other pieces that we've already seen, so I won't stop at every slide at extended time. I'll go into the new data, so you'll see the actual numbers. Why do we revalue property? Basically, the state of North Carolina says we have to. Some states don't have a revaluation cycle, and it's left up to the counties, and most of those states have been under massive lawsuits for one reason or the other. So we need to be between 90 and 100% of value. If not, I use Duke Energy, if they have $100 million in value, if we drop below 90%, they won't pay on $100 million, they'll pay on whatever percentage we are. 86, they'd pay on 86 million. So that's why you have to have it. What do we do? We collect and review sales, we look at all the maps, we gotta route them, we look and analyze the sales from '17, '18, because those are the most efficient, tell them what the market is doing now. I know there's been sales in '15 and '16, but as you go through these sales, hopefully as you get closer to revout, things are improving, and so you want the closest sale date. If you go to the bank, you don't want necessarily somebody valuing your property back in '15 if you're trying to get a loan in year '18. The same way with us. We have to be at 100% of value. We develop pricing manual, schedule values. You guys approved that a few meetings back, so it's set in stone, and now we applied the values. This is a long section. This will be on the website in about a day. There's an older version out there, but it'd be replaced with this. These are the things that you go through when you are setting values. You look at the property, you look at sales, you identify certain areas of concern, you send notice of value. That's where we are right now. We'll send those notices in January. You can have an informal review then. Basically, that's all by turning back written information. Even today, we still have roughly 50% of our population that owns property, don't live in Macon County, so the written information is much easier for them to access.
You said 50%?
Uh, I'm sorry?
50%?
Yeah, because you have to look at the empty, the last census, they put like 47% of the actual structures are owned by somebody that don't have a local address, and when you do the population multiplier, it was 2.1%. See, so they're not gonna be here. They may be here nine months a year, but they're not domiciled here. We set hearing dates. After the hearing date, you go to Board of VNR. Mr. Bill has been our chairman a couple of years on that, and, you know, it's a long process. Historically, what I've seen, Macon County since 1980, '83, people appeal values here more than they do in some other counties. You got a lot of retired people, they got a lot of time. People that are working in a busy environment, they don't spend that much time. They may send in a written appeal informally, but they won't show up at the hearing actually in front of the Board of VNR. Now, that's even changed here. People will do written appeals here more so than showing up at Board of VNR, or they'll get an attorney or somebody show up for them. After that time, then you got the time for appeal in Raleigh, and it has to be within 30 days of the notice that we changed or did not change your value. The Board of Equalization since the early '91, I guess, has been volunteers. There has been maybe a commissioner on there at one time, but they're all people in the real estate industry, being appraisers, being realtors or something like that. So we have a really good board. Some of them have been on there 15 or 20 years, and it's worked really well for Macon County. The approach is to value, you have three, comparable sales, income, and cost approach. Income approach applies basically to commercial properties. Mr. Bill has so many rental units out there, what that rent brings in less his expenses is tell you what he could sell that to. It's a financial approach. Comparable sales, you sell your house, and the man down the street has one identical to yours, built at the same time, it should be similar in value. And cost approach, what does it cost to build that thing? Cost does not always equate value. There are, some people put more cost in than they get in the market, and some people put less cost, and they're in a good neighborhood and they'll get more return. Market value, this is actually defined in law, is the most probable selling price that a property will bring in a competitive market where both buyer and seller are motivated and well-informed. So you should know what you're buying, should know what you're selling. One thing is, like, we know the highways. If we, if I got a piece of property and I don't know who highways coming in, but the buyer does, well, you know, he's got advantage over you and vice versa. So that's why I said you should know all facts about the property, if it's got a deed restriction, not a deed restriction, something like that. This is not market value. Transactions from auctions, short sales, some estate sales, liquidations, foreclosure, family or associated sales. As we went through the foreclosures, you'd see a lot of people, banks taking back properties, and then somebody would flicker real quick, it wasn't actually the market for that house. When bank takes it back, they're not in the business to be a realtor. They try to turn it, so those kind of sales are not recognized. What affects value, of course, remodeling, supply and demand, local economy, cost of replacement, similar. You see the price of housing, what it's done from the '80s. When I was there, lows in '80, you know, you could buy a house and land for $40,000, I mean, new. So that's not the market now. It, you know, $150 a foot for an average house up is depending where you are. Highlands is a lot higher, the lake's higher because you bring in labor, you got shipping and all that. One back from there is, if I can get back. Make its growth rate. Right there, this- Right there, this is really important because it goes on with supply and demand. If you look in the early 80s and 90s, we're way down there around 20,000 population thereabout, and we increased there in the hot period, say 90 to 2010. But if you look at the last 11 through now, we're not really increasing. It looks more dramatic on that graph, but the lines are really shorter. So we are not growing near as fast. What that means is there's not that big of a demand on the properties like there used to be. At one time, you fell on the market and they were selling it real quick. If you look at the real estate sales and things like that, we used to have maybe 4,000 sales and maybe 1,500 building permits a year, and now they have 1,500 building permits before 500 houses or major additions. Now, last year, we probably had like 70 new houses. So it's a totally different market. Partial growth, if you look at that, it's kind of stagnated too. From about 10 to 18, it's staying right around the 43, 44,000. So when you're not splitting land, you're not gaining a lot of value. Because that's where we gained a lot of values, when people built all these subdivisions, on top of them subdivision for houses. We built golf courses in the 80s and 90s up in Highlands. It was just a massive growth we had. Indicators, these are lot sales. If you look at 17, 18, 17 went up a little bit, but right now, these are projected out through the end of the month. They actually are going down again this year unless there's a major rush of deeds. Between now and December 31st, we're not going to meet last year's events. Total sales, as you can see there, 17, 18, it's flatlined. It came up from 15, but it's still flatlined. If you look at the different types of housing, especially, you know, the 500,000, 1 million, 2 million, it's correct, misleading there, the 2 million, I don't have any this year. But the 1 million, it had a little bit more this year, but the 500,000 range ones, that group is not growing. Okay, now we get into the value. What is revenue neutral? If you recall, you have to have a revenue neutral tax rate. And that allows for your growth of the last three years on top of the tax rate, plus what your adopted budgets are by the new value. To make that simple, our tax value in 18 was $8 billion. Times the tax rate, roughly, you wanted to bring in about $28 million. However, to get that for 19, the new value is like 7.6. Then you've got public service being utilities, 159 million. Motor vehicles bringing 335 million. So you're going to have a value of about 8.1 billion. Less appeals, 25 million. Less homestead exemptions, which is 60 million. You're going to have about $8.1 billion. 8.1 billion, that only is a 0.003% growth. Real estate value, it's a 0.004% growth. So there is, basically, you're breaking even. All this tears you, the market has not grown, it's stabilized the last four years. It's a little bit stagnated. There are parts of the market that have seen increases, and we'll discuss that in a minute. Tax revenue neutral, that 29.3 is what actual was reoccurring money that needs to come in next year, based on last, this budget you just adopted. And the reason that being, the last night before you adopt the budget, you put like $1.2 million in there that's reoccurring. Unless you replace that with some other money, you got that in the budget. So if you're going to figure your rate, it's based on what happened this year. So you divide that by the new value, you come up with 36.2 cents. Then you've got your growth factor in there, they allow, it's averaging about 1%. So that's 3.66. Then you've got a collection factor, we're at 98.5%, so you've got to take that off because you can't collect 100%. So when you do that, you're looking at a tax rate of 37 cents. That's on numbers today. That's not what accepted when you do the budget. If you put other things in, if, you know, their values change dramatically, which I wouldn't say they would, but that's what you're looking at. That's your starting point. And where you end up, that's a process your board does, that's not mine. The reason I did that, to give you a comparison of what average people are going to look at when they get a tax bill, based on this mathematical formulas we just went through. These are some of the same places I used in 15. So if you see the base tax, and I'm not using the fire tax or the landfill fees or anything like that because each fire district has a tax and landfill fee. So this is just your base property tax. Last year, this house paid 909. The value is dropping to around 215, rate is going to be 37 cents. So their base tax, 798, they're saving $111, 12.2% breaking their tax. This one goes from 93 to 100, increase of $46 or increase of 14% on their tax. Some of these will start looking familiar. This one is 1.13, it goes to 1.164. Base tax, 3970 to 43, increase 338, or 8.5%. 396 to 373, the base tax stays basically the same. 1.5 to 1.6, it sees a $492 increase in taxes or 9%.
Beautiful landscape.
Somebody's hired somebody well. It froze up on you. It's still trying to come down from Highlands. Here's 111,000, it goes to 104, difference is nothing. 127 to 116, it's a decrease of $14 to 3.2%. As you can see, different houses in different locations, different construction, different ages, they all are different. Because the market for each one of those houses are different, and location. Some of these may be in Smithbridge or out in a remote area. Some may be in a nicer neighborhood. This here is one of the bigger houses in the county. But this one's sold, so I know, you know, what's going on here. We have 10 million, it's going to 13 million. The increase is 13,000 or 38% tax increase. And it's sold for more than that, 13,000. This one, 122, is going to 161, $170 increase or 39%. Some of these things, they get changed, remodeled, upgraded, effective age, they're taken better care of, so they don't keep depreciation, they just go up in this class. This one, 459, 440, increase $27 or 1%. This one's 754, goes to 737, basically a $310 difference in tax or 22%. Some of those go, that one had deferment, so you know, if you've got a deferment, your deferred amount, unless your house or your improvements increased in value, your land, you'll pay the same on land. Your deferment did the same thing. 197 to 196, $37 increase or 5.3%. Finally, reassessment of volatile. You know, there's established procedures, we've been doing this a number of years. My first one, I started in 87, soon after I got here. So I've done everyone since then. And like I said, you always have people, I think it's more of an educational process. People, you've got so many people moving and coming in and new people coming in, and it's always different. Georgia's different, South Carolina's different, Florida, every state's different. So when they come in here, they want educated, and they come and talk to us about it. You have to be equal between properties. If you're in a neighborhood and all the houses are same, it would be great. But we have a lot of custom homes and different things in different places. You could be in the country club of Highlands, but if you don't have a view or a young island golf course, you know, that affects it. Where like if you go to Charlotte, you've got the neighborhoods, every house in there is in 200,000 range to 225. You go to the next neighborhood, maybe 150 to 175, you know. Every house in there is going to sell. I just looked at one down in Somerville, little subdivision where my daughter lives. They have 14 sales in there, and they was all grouped in 160, 175,000 dollars, every one of them. It's like cookie cutter. We don't have that here. You could have nice homes mixed with, you know, older homes, where you could have some. I've been to some of the big houses, they had some old original properties there that you go through before you get to that big house I just showed you or something. So it's a mixed game. Things to remember, we have to be 100% of market value. Values may not be what the owner has invested in the property. You know, if you bought it 10 years ago, you can't say, well, I'll pay X dollars for it. You've got to show what the market is today. Different classes change at a different rate, different locations change at a different rate. Percentage of increase or decrease is not a reason in the state of North Carolina for appeal. Burden proof is on the taxpayer. All this is proven by state courts and that. These are things that they've gone through the courts, and this is what the basic demand is. And they've ruled, the assessments are assumed correct unless you come to burden proof. And this basically, we're to the, they're going to be mailed mid-January. Informal appeals will be written in the Board of Equalization. By law, has to start in April, and it has to shut down so many weeks after it starts. Now, it may shut down for accepting new appeals, that don't mean they quit work and they'll have to go through that whole stack. Sometimes it may, you know, three weeks more of work, but they can't accept no new appeal. All this stuff has to be advertised in the papers and everything else. It's on your notices when you get it. What's going to happen, this is the one that probably caused some people to not be happy. If you look down there, and as you can see, overall, the values are, we only gained 0.42%, that's gross. But if you look at the different townships, you know, there could be a reason why the value went up or went down or changed or whatever. One thing we are seeing at more and more of, people don't want to be way out. And I'm not picking on any location, but for an instance, they don't want to be way out in the end of Cowie, they don't want to be way out in Bonningtown. There are people that want to be there, but the market is smaller and smaller. People want to be closer to town. The town of Highlands, and Jim can tell you, people are building expensive homes in the town of Highlands now, instead of being in the clubs. Some people don't want to be in the clubs no more. So that reflects in the value. Nantahala, at one time, when I first started this, front lot on the lake was 25,000. But they got up to about 750,000. Well, people paying that now, they want to be somewhere closer to Gainesville or Clayton or something. They want restaurants and all that. And for Nantahala, it's isolated, so the values have actually decelerated there. So anyways, that's the thing. And I always get asked, the last column, I added it yesterday, what is that percentage of value in each township? And these are just mathematical numbers, so I think everybody should be aware of it. The town of, town of Highlands, in the township of Highlands makes up 46% of the taxes. If you throw in Scaly Mountain, it's making up 54%. And then the next largest will be the town of Franklin and Franklin City. If you get out in your outline areas, everybody else, these two districts supplement, because this is where most value is. Now, one thing I did put in this, when I add the personal property back in, the town of Franklin picks up more value than the other townships because you've got Duke Power, you've got, you know, Verizon, you've got all these big utility things closer to town. So if cars, you'll have, let's see, you have about 14,000, 15,000 vehicles in the Franklin township, where you go to Highlands, you've got 2,000. So, you know, cars is a big part of money. So that, so when you add all that together, it gets closer. But for just real estate, that's where we are. This is your notice that you'll get in the mail. It's same as the last two years. The only thing we changed, dates and things, and added the email address because so many people email, it's the way we converse with them now. And it gives you option of putting in some comparables. In-house reappraisal, we're talking about, you know, the 30-year type people and all that. Well, when I came here, I think it was Shorty Mason and Raymond Shepherd, and those type of people was on board, Miles Gregory and that. And they said, well, we want it done different than it used to be. So that's how we got in on in-house. So for the last number of reappraisals, we have saved the county $5.2 million. So, and that continues to, every time this year around, we save $956,000. So that's why you never want to just do one way, you always want to improve on where you're going. Now, your turn to talk, if you have any questions or comments.
What are you seeing in just raw mountain land?
It's going down.
Going down.
Yeah, I mean, at one time, we's...
You're talking about lots or multiple acreage or?
Acreage and all. I mean, at one time, any acreage would be over 10, 15,000. Now, 10 or 15, you get more farmable type stuff. At one time, you know, something like Gold City up there, it'd be less than $1,000 an acre. We're not at that yet, we're not back to 1,000. But depending on access to your rural land, people are buying larger tracts to put a home. I mean, there are still some of those people, they want a little isolation, so they'll buy a bigger raw tract to get one or two building sites. But they're harder to sell too, they're not near as expensive as they used to be. Good farmland, maybe 15,000 compared to, it used to be 25.
These older subdivisions with the...
Older subdivisions, there's so many out there. Most, Echo Valley, you just name them. There's probably lots of lots in there that don't perk and don't meet. And they're, you know, you're going to have half a lot of work done. Have a new survey, see if it perks, see a lot of things. Because a lot of these smaller subdivisions are out in the county, and they may only be third-acre lots. I mean, I don't know what you can build on third acre if you don't have water and sewer somewhere available. So there's a lot of those out there. I mean, and even... I mean, and even like Porter Creek, I mean, they hadn't sold no lots in there as much since it started. And they're asking a higher price than what we can put on it because they're not selling. So, you know, you have that all the time.
Any further questions? I got...
Thank you.
I got one, Richard, real quick, just because I know I'm going to get asked, just like I do every time, I can't remember the answer. Do y'all take zoning restrictions into consideration?
Yes. And, and that's always been, I know up in Highlands, they've been better getting that zoning stuff to us. The normal process that comes down through our mapping and GIF and it goes into our files. But if they make changes, they're supposed to notify us as soon as possible. Sometimes if, if there is a zoning change or a zoning question, that usually comes out pretty early. People come in and say, but this has been changed from commercial back to B1 or something like that. And then we, because the highest and best use is based on what's legally permissible. So, you know, I might have a great piece of property, but if I can't put a commercial on there, it's still not legally permissible.
Well, I know there's a, a major price barrier issue between a B1 in Highlands and a B2 in Highlands, because of the restrictions on this. I'll hear the BT people complaining and nothing I can do about it, as you know.
Yeah.
They'll be complaining, well, how come I'm getting the same as the B1? And I don't know that they are or they're not, I don't know that they know that they're not.
Now, there is a difference up there and I know right down Main Street, it changes.
That's right.
But what comes into play is sometimes, you know, some B2s will sell at a pretty high rate because it's still location.
Sure.
I mean, Highlands is a little, pretty unique because you get top up there and it flattens out for about a mile. So when you get on top of that plateau, you know, you can go right down the line and see the sale of increase.
Yeah.
When you get right in the middle at say B1, you know, you don't have to have parking and everything else, so per square foot, it's much higher.
Much higher, that's right, that's right. Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that in the clubs, Richard, I know when, for many, many years that they've always came, you know, all the country clubs have came. Are they still, is that golf course still the main thing, those houses around, is that changing to?
Yeah, Highlands Country Club is pretty still demand. Of course, they've come back some, but what I'm hearing, I talk to realtors and that, that's why you see downtown Highlands, these million dollar patio homes or whatever they call them, and they're selling at a brisk rate. I'm saying a million gets you in, and some going 2 million. People want to be close to town, they don't want to pay those. Golf is like anything, the golfing sector is shrinking. There's less people playing golf nationwide. So things, that still shrinks when you're talking about coming up here and paying a big price to be in a club. People rather buy a nice place located downtown or something. One thing I need to point out, and it's affecting values and this beyond lines, so you'll see those values whenever you want. The town of Franklin and Franklin City are not growing. And we've probably pretty generous with the town of Franklin, but as long as we have the shopping centers we have with so many vacancies and other type buildings with vacancies, I can't put values on those things that the income stream does not support. And Kmart Shonset, when they're empty and Walmart sitting over here, Ingles is sitting on it for $3.6 million, I can't put real higher on there. So that's really affecting growth and that's why Highlands is taking a bigger value growth than the town of Franklin. Highlands, they're pretty full most time and they're even turned into, like this time of year through spring, it used to be dead, well, there'll be people up there all the time now. Well, when you've got so many empty buildings in town, that affects what value's going to be. And the bank just sold, Ronnie knows, over there where Bojangles is going, they sold it for like $200,000 less than what it was just two or three years ago. So, and that's going to continue unless some economic changes happen in this area down low. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, moving on to ninth seat, tier designation. Mr. Chairman, you're going to add it, Mr. Bill?
Well, since we just got all that good news, we'll tell you why. This is just to clear up some, maybe some confusion. This is from the Labor and Economic Analysis Division from the Department of Commerce about the tier designation, which came out, the new tier designations came out on December the 30th. And, and a lot of us in the West have moved our tier designations. So what does that mean? Well, the legislature has changed the process of doing tier designations. There was some other things that went into the distressed rankings. Now there's four general things that goes into the tier rankings, which are unemployment, the median household income, the population growth, and assessed property values that Richard just talked about. So, number one, there's always going to be 100, there's 100 counties in North Carolina. There's always going to be 20 tier three counties. There's always going to be 40 tier two counties. There's always going to be 40 tier one counties. However they break out, some of them are right on the line. Last time we were right on the line for a tier one county, we became a tier one county. This time the new tier ran, once you're a tier one county, that lasts two years. So now we're a tier two county. And along with that, there's several changes in the West that you should, might give you some idea of. We are now ranked number 73 in the state. Number one in the state would be the most distressed. Number 100 is the most, least distressed. Chatham County is the least distressed county in the state, followed by Wake County. You can imagine what the top 20 counties are, are the larger counties. The largest county to go from a tier three to a tier two was Brunswick County, for several reasons. But here in the West, we went from a tier one to a tier two. For the first time ever, by the way, you can't be a tier three, you have to have 50,000 population also to be considered to be a tier three. The ones in the West who changed their tier designations were Jackson County, material one, tier two. Macon County, tier one, tier two. Clay County, for the first time ever. Clay County has the least population of any county to be a tier two. They probably going to appeal their tier rating, Clay County probably going to, because they have it. And Cherokee County went from a tier one to a tier two. So, so in the tier ratings, and, and you can dispute some of the factors on the tier rating, but to give you an idea, we're in the state under these rankings, we're ranked number 73 as least distressed. To give you an idea, Jackson County is rated at number 75, least distressed. And you move to Clay County, they're rated number 66, least distressed. Haywood County is a number three. Haywood County's three, Buncombe County's a number three. What does that mean for us being a tier one compared to a tier two? Now, it does mean difference in, in some funding for some grants for the school. It means some funding if Kim applied for some grants from a tier one to a tier two county. Some good, some bad, it works both ways. But a tier two county is where probably we should be, to be honest. And, and you look at our property values and you look at everything else and our unemployment rate, which is now almost nil, or has been. So, but the tier rankings is, they take these numbers that, they get them from each county. And so that's how the tier rankings, now they'll come out again, except the tier one counties will not change. So you won't see a tier, you won't see another tier ranking for two years. So they'll probably remain a tier two for two years. We don't anticipate being a tier three, but we're only seven points away from being a tier three county, but we don't have the population. We'll see what the 2020 census does. The 2020 census is going to change some of this, and that's the reason that we're gearing up already for the 2020 census. It's going to be so important, it's probably more important than any tier rating is the census, which we appealed and lost the appeal to the appeal to the appeal, if everybody remembers, that we were counted wrong. And so, Mr. Chairman, I, we just wanted to sort of clarify that. I hope we didn't make it less confusing than what it already is. But the tier ratings are important to the county in several ways. When we make application, and Lori will tell you that, we make application in a lot of ways as not a distressed county, a lot of that has to do with economics also. It also goes with our, you know, how, how we're viewed as, when we go out to borrow money and, and our, and our, how we're rating, you know, our A rating or the double A, single A, triple A rating, a lot of that goes into play too, so. So just to clarify that, that not only did we move to a, to a A from a one to a two, but we moved to the top tier of a number two. So, so we're just seven, there's really just six counties really in two because we're basically tied to one. There's just six counties that separate us from a tier three. We can't be a tier three because we don't have 50,000 of population. So according to that, Macon County's doing real well, but we all know we've got a lot of stuff to work on, but we hope to tell you what clarifies the tier rating system and how that works and how the Department of Commerce, what they look at. Mr. Chairman, do you think you want to add to that? Please do so.
I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bill. Moving on to old business, tax refund request by Edward Castle.
Chester Jones and us have been working on this and we was hoping to have some more conversation with the owner. We did have the conversation, however, we didn't get no more paperwork from them yet. However, I checked with the Macon County Airport and this is a small jet, so it's not going to land just anywhere. And the jet has never been landed at Macon last year. So if you go into the Machinery Act 105304, there's, that's where it says situs. And basically, situs is where a piece of property is located. And it says tangible personal property must have acquired a tax situs in the state. When they say state, that means any political subdivision of the state which county is. Per situs in an absolutely essential tax exaction. Basically, they're saying if you don't have jurisdiction over it because it's not been here, you can't tax it. And another court case says without violating the U.S. Constitution Amendment 14, it says you must have status over something to tax it. And another case was, you can only acquire a tax status in this state if the non-resident property, without violating the provisions of the U.S. Constitution Amendment. Basically, a non-resident can have property here, but it could be taxed here if it's situated here. Basically, we don't have situs on the property. It's never been Macon County, you know, it's like Carl, he has some trucks and that. If he had a couple located all the time in Buncombe for part of his business, then Buncombe could tax his trucks. UPS don't have all their trucks here, they just tax what's in this county. This man's never landed his plane here, he got his FAA number and he must have been up in his Highlands resident, which is in Jackson County, when he got the notice and he put his mailing address up there. As for the plane, it's located between Dakota, Georgia, and Airport in Florida. So I recommend to the county because we don't have tax situs. Also talk to Institute of Government and Public Tax Commission, we don't have situs, so it would be allowable refund.
We've got a motion to approve.
Based on information provided, motion to refund.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Richard, as, just, just hit me there, if you wouldn't potentially be using that to get out, get business of all three counties and then don't have to pay taxes on them.
No, he actually, like I said, this is a jet. He got a hangar and it hadn't even been in Buncombe. He rents one in Buncombe and Dakota is where it's most of the time and down in Florida. So he actually has hangars down there.
No, my, my, what I'm saying is, is he wouldn't be using, hey, let me hear it, here's what I pay Macon County.
Well, Florida, they got a real peculiar rule. I don't even know if they actually tax jets, because we had that with one of the landowners here, had his in Florida one time and they taxed it totally different, through a different process. So, but we just don't have situs on, so we could do it anywhere.
Thank you. Capital Project Ordinance Amendment.
Do you approve that?
Finance Director.
Yeah, this is just adding 200,000 more to this Capital Project Ordinance. If you'll recall, when I passed the budget this year, we did a 200,000 transfer to this project and I believe this was the tail end of it, right Warren? So this is just amending it so that Warren can spend the money and keep moving forward with that project.
Motion to approve the amendment.
Give me a second. Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yes, Lori? Thanks, Lori. New business, Cowie School Arts Heritage Center was called in the following states together in the county. Welcome, gentlemen.
Just real briefly, Mr. Chairman, at the end of last, the last regular meeting that we had, Mr. Bill had requested that I do a little bit of work in connection with some leases that were being utilized at the Cowie, almost Cowie School property. And as a result of looking into that, what I found was is that county really probably needed to have a lease with the corporation that's operating the facility down there. As a result, I prepared that, talked with the county manager about it. He said, prepare it for your consideration, and that's what I've done.
Greetings, one and all. Thank you for, thank you for a little time here this evening. We are looking to, through this is to formalize our agreement with the county for really what's already in place. It's just, it's something that we, we just need to, need to do. And also, thank you, Chester, for the work on our contract with the tenants down there, left a lot to be desired and now we have a much better contract to take to them in January if these are approved. I gave you all our financial statement, that's just what we prepared based on last year to give to people we're applying to for grants. And also I would highlight, down at the bottom of that, is that the board adopted a policy of a yearly audit on all of our, finding all of our money handling there. That's something that we never want there to be a question about, using a combination of private money, county money, and grant money from other organizations. So that's in place and we'll do another one of those. We do those on the end of the county financial year, not the IRS tax year. So that's what you're seeing there. I just want to tell you all a couple of short stories here about what's going on at the school. I assume that you all read the local newspaper, being leaders in the community, and I hope you've been, kept abreast of what's going on at the school down there. We have had a, another tremendously successful year. We will go over 12,000 user visits this year. And we didn't have an eclipse this year or anything, we just had increased use by the entirety of the community. People are, countywide are coming to understand that this is a countywide facility. It's not, just because Cowie is the name that's associated with it all the time, the Cowie School, it's not just a Cowie project, it's, it's for everybody. And they are certainly starting to use it that way. Our three special big events that, that we're having at the school now, we're going to have to use shuttle buses for all of those events. Of course, we're having to use the big school buses for the Folk Festival and bring people in from town. We had over 2,000 people at the Folk Festival this year. We have Cowie Christmas and we're going to have to use shuttle buses from the churches next year, that has grown in size. We have a new event called the Balsam Bee. I can't explain it in a short amount of time. Little bags of ground up balsam needles. I didn't even want to think about this project when it was first proposed. Claire Smitsky, the family took it on, it was a huge success and we look forward to that growing again. And that'll be another event next year that we will have to shuttle people from the church parking lots. And, and I want to publicly thank Cowie Baptist Church and Snow Hill Methodist for letting us use their parking facilities when we have these events. They've been very cooperative and in turn, we made the school available to them for whatever. I want to give a shout out too to the Folk Heritage Association for working so closely with. with us. They're an event-oriented group, we're facility-oriented, and we work very well together on that, and I look forward to that continuing. Early on in the year, Western North Carolina Pathways Organization came to us. They work with all of the nonprofits in Western North Carolina. They came to us and suggested that they would support our effort if we requested a grant from the Western North Carolina Community Foundation, who offers grants of this one. The one that we got was valued at $7,500, which we have applied for, gotten and executed, to work with a consultant that specializes in helping nonprofits learn how to operate their nonprofit and to develop a long-range strategic plan. We will receive the completed strategic plan that we've been working on for nine months in January, and we'll make sure that y'all get copies of that, of your input on that. It's nothing that's etched in a stone. It's, we got all the heads together. Where are we? How did we get here? Where do we want to go, and how do we do that? It's a plan. You have to have a plan if you want to get there. So, I'm going to pat everybody, county, our board members, the tenants, everybody on the back a little bit here. Things are happening at the school, and they're drawing a lot of notice. Again, pathways came to us, we did not seek them out. We got a call from the North Carolina Arts Council, can they come to the school and visit with us? Sure. They came, they met with Stacy, and they said, we like what we see here, we like the distribution of things that you're offering across the board. We would like for you to apply for the Arts Council grant to Macon County, which we got. We did not seek that out, but they redirected that for us to use at the school for a whole variety of programmatic offerings that we're going to begin. I'm going to keep going here for just a second. This is also spread, so that's a statewide thing there. Locally, regionally, and we were just in contact, Stacy Wallace today, with one of these groups, other nonprofits here in Western North Carolina that are trying to do similar things that are having trouble getting going. There's the Historic Snyder Store in Graham County, Fines Creek Schools, it's a huge school that served Northern Haywood County, and Shelton Marl School, also a fairly large school that served Northern Madison County, have all come to us to see how we're doing. They have heard about Cowie School, what's going on there, how did this happen? How did we make it work where we are? So, we're trying to coach them along. So, we're getting a lot of attention. Things are going right down there. I'm going to try and, I think that the point that I would like to make here is, the money that the county has invested in that school over time allows us to show county involvement. When we go out for grants, our county's involved in this, they have a stake in this. That's one of the prerequisites for some of the grants that we get. We have to have an audit, we have to show our 501(c)(3) designation, and they want to know that the county has a stake in what's going on. And so, we appreciate the continued support of the board there. The money that's spent there turns over in the community, not just from the benefit to those 12,000 people that came in the doors down there and received some benefit, intangible maybe, but money that turns over in the form of people visiting the school. They stay in our community when they come for special events, they're in our hotels, our restaurants, retail stores, they're in our campgrounds, and they not only spend money here, but they see what else we have to offer here, and a lot of them, a lot of the folks that come down there tell us that they've come back to Macon County because of the things that they experienced while they're here. And so, I just want you to know that that money rolls over, just like it does in any other money that the county spends. So, here tonight, I just wanted to let you know, there's a lot of good things going on. If there are any complaints, concerns, I'm not, the board is not hearing them, our board's not hearing them. If you're hearing them, I would appreciate knowing about it so that we can address it if there's anything. So, now, the two documents, I think, that Chester prepared there, I don't know how do we, do we act for action on this, if that's appropriate?
With respect to, I passed out to you a resolution which has attached to it a proposed lease agreement for one year between Macon County and the, and the Macon County Heritage Center doing business as Cowie School Arts and Heritage Center. We set it at one year because that's, that's all we can do without doing an advertising. And I think it's a good thing for us to do in any event, to do this on an annual basis. Requires you to look at it and talk and see how things are going. So, that having been said, that is what the board would need to act on. The other document is a sublease form that your organization could utilize with subtenants, and our board would not have to approve that.
Okay, yeah. Well, we certainly thank Chester for the work on this. In looking at this and the contract form that we were operating under, it left a lot to be desired, and we're all bitter off having this. Thank you, Chester.
Mr. Chairman, having close connection with the Heritage Center, of course, what Bobby left out is that, the difference, and you've never heard Bobby say this, but what the difference is that the Cowie Heritage Center has become a place of destination now. It really has. I mean, you hear the number 12,000. To compare that with, I mean, you look at what else in the county draws 12,000 people just to come, you've got the Jim and Menel Society, which draws a huge number of folks. That's on par with that. There's not many things that, you know, we have downtown with the Folk Heritage, you know, they do a wonderful job, but it's on par, it's on par with those things. And the Heritage Center, the board has done a wonderful job, Stacy's done a wonderful job down there. It's, he's not been down to the school. Of course, the county, it's a taxpayer's building, but this board does a wonderful job managing that building, and I appreciate Chester. It did need some work to get it cleaned up for, to protect the taxpayer and to protect the board as they lease these rooms out for a lot of reasons. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion, we adopt the resolution of Macon County, declare a property be at the Macon County Heritage Center, and approve the lease for one year.
Motion to approve, a second?
I'll second that with just one brief call in here to echo some of the things that Ronnie said. I've had opportunity to make a few unannounced visits, and things consistently look good, always in the same shape. Was able to catch last show of the season, which we enjoy. Citizens make the county very fortunate to have that facility and have you folks managing it, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. We have a lot of dedicated people on the board there, and Stacy provides, really above and beyond the call of duty as far as oversight and management for the site down there. His heart's in it, and that's not always the case with some of the positions.
There is a need to get this executed just as quickly as we can. Their subleases are going to be due up the first of the year, and this really should be in place before that.
Any further discussion?
Let me ask one question. When you have a person that comes in and wants to do a sublease, how do you, where's the line drawn? That you accept them in or you won't accept them in? It says you can get a nondescriptory.
That's correct.
And is it your board that says who can come in, who can't, or what line do you use?
Well, it is. The prime directive for us on that is that the prospective tenant provides something there that's in keeping with the theme and the purpose and the origin of the school there. Of course, the overriding thing is, we don't have any vacancies. That's not something that we have to make decisions on often. But those are the two priority items there. The first and being that needs to be consistent with the theme of the school.
Mr. Shields, that's expressly provided for in the lease, yeah.
And when I saw religion or otherwise, otherwise is what you're looking in deep.
If you look at number five in particular, it basically says that the, they sublease for purposes consistent with the recreational uses of the premises allowed unto the tenant under the terms of this lease agreement. In other words, you're not going to be putting in a convenience store down there. It's going to be uses that are consistent with what they have been using it for.
Any further questions, any discussion?
Thank you.
Good, but you all agree there.
Yes.
You're the one.
So, you can probably say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I have one more. I don't know if it's appropriate to act on it tonight, but I need to bring this up because we're funded on a six-month increment, and we're coming to the end of that first six months. Right now, we're making plans for next year that affect hundreds of people and thousands and thousands of dollars, and it would really be beneficial in the future going forward. What I'm asking for tonight is, is the other, is the other half of the money we talked about back in June, which would be $18,000 for the continuation of our position at the school there. We're not asking for any more than that. We haven't asked for more than that in seven years now. So, that's the primary thing that I'm asking for. Whether it's appropriate to act on that $18,000 tonight or not, I don't know.
When we did the budget, we appropriated six months, and we were hoping, I guess that it would come through what we were, is that still a possibility, Stacy? I mean, I know there's strings attached to that money that we were hoping for, but it's not there.
Not yet. There's still some outstanding money, grant money that was funded last year that's not here.
Some of that comes as stipulations, like some of the other grant money that's been received, you cannot pay for employees out of that.
All the grant money that comes in has, as you know, it's got strings attached to it, and we have to spend it for specific things. Very rarely do we get overhead or administrative money attached to any of those grants.
So, yours is funded through December, Stacy?
Yeah, through December.
Through December. And where would that money come from, Mr. Manager?
We got it out of the budget, the remainder. Contingency's the only place that I.
We've got 84, 335 in contingency.
So, we didn't put the full amount in.
No, we would.
But you did have, because at the time, there was some grant money that we thought could come through for.
And hit May, but we cannot, nobody knows that for sure. And if it does, it can't be repaid to the county, but we can apply it next year, next budget cycle if that does happen.
We can.
But we don't know that.
We don't know, we don't have it in hand yet.
It's not bird in hand.
It's approved, but it's one of those checks and lay things.
It's been approved, but it's not, it's not, we don't see that yet. So, that's what we were, you know, the goal, the goal has always been, and Bobby will tell you, and Stacy will tell you, I mean, we started out, I think, we were putting close to 80 grand a year in. And it's always been the goal of the board down there and everybody involved to get it down to where it's self-sufficient. And for most places like this, to cut it in half over this period of time has been more than good. Most have had to go up. Most people that do these things have to, you know, have to, not cutting it in half. So, so if, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and fund the other six months, I mean, I think it's an overrunning myself. I'm certainly willing to make the motion if you, it's up to you.
Just want to pop up.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we go ahead and take out a contingency to, to carry the other six months through by lack of the other grant not coming through, and go ahead and fund the other six months.
$18,000?
$18,000.
That needs to be in there.
That this board can go ahead and plan for the next six months as they move this, as this very important project as well.
Do you need a budget?
That's what, I guess, effectively, he's doing a budget amendment to take it out of contingency there on his motion. So, you second it?
I'll, I'll second. You call. Any further discussion? I'd like, Bobby, I'd just like to mention, not picking on you, but I want this board to take into consideration too, I'm a fan of Cowie and what you are doing there, but there are a lot of arts programs in Macon County, and I get beat up on a daily basis.
I understand.
You name it, from the Vaston to the Performing Arts Center to all of those in Highlands that are wanting money too, and I think it's interesting that this board has invested so much into that, in the Cowie School through the past. So, it doesn't mean I'm not a fan of the arts, because I'm going to vote for this tonight because I think I need it, but at the same time, I would love to see y'all get to that point, or and I have in this court yard, just like, it's tough for me to defend.
I understand.
Everyone else who are consistently giving y'all money on yearly basis.
That's the goal.
That is the goal.
That means it all in favor, say the pose saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Stacy, thank you for your help.
Yes, Stacy.
Thank you, Bobby.
Let me make one comment on that, Sebby, before we, before we head off here, just to let you all know that we know what the original charge was for us to do down there. And while it was idealistic to do it that way, it's not realistic in practice because what grows the most rapidly is the demand for service, and our programmatic money grows while the other does not. What we have to step up on our end is local, is personal local donations that are not tethered to one project or another, where we have discretionary money that we can pay a position. And we understand, and we're still working, the whole board understands, we still have to work in that direction, we're just not there yet. And the other thing that I will be coming to you about individually is whatever we decide on for next year, if we could do it for an entire year rather than doing the six-month thing, I think that we've shown that whatever money we get, we're responsible and productive with it, and it would certainly help us with our planning. Like right now, as we're looking into next year, we were uncertain about this. It would certainly help us, whatever amount there is or is not decided on next year.
I hate to say it, but it's on this budget time, Mr. Manager.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Bobby. Very appreciate it, Sebby. Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it.
All right. Fire protection contract with Savannah Volunteer Fire Department. I think this one's, welcome back, Warren. I think this one's been on the radar for quite some time now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, what I want to discuss is fire protection for an area of Macon County, a very small area, that's only accessible by going through another county. An area question that I will talk to you about is called the Turkey Knob area. Geographically, this is a little bit to the north of the Mountain Grove community. It's a little bit more toward the El J side, if you're thinking about where Mountain Grove Road is and where El J intersects there. It's a little bit over the ridge there from Mountain Grove. And in that particular area, there are nine parcels that have eight different owners that is actually located in Macon County, but the only way that you can get there is to go up Pumpkin Town Road over in Jackson County and turn up Two Sweet Road, which is way up toward the end of Pumpkin Town to get to these, these folks. It's actually in the, it's in the Colosseum Fire District. And practicality basically speaks for itself that Savannah Fire Department has been responding to these folks if they have any issues, because with this being in the Colosseum Fire District, they would have, Colosseum would have to come all the way from Highlands Road, all the way up Cowie Mountain, and then go up Pumpkin Town to get to these folks. So, the solution that Chester and I have looked at, this is already inside a recognized fire district, to solve this issue, and let me tell you the benefits of it, these parcels are now in what would be considered a protection class 10, or an unprotected area. If we were to move these over to the Savannah Fire Department, Savannah actually has a protection class 6 in that area, so it would be a significant insurance savings to these folks for these, these homes that are in there, these parcels. Plus practicality-wise, that's, that's the best option for them. The option that Chester and I have talked about to, to make this work is to basically amend the contract with the Colosseum Gorge Fire Rescue, because we have, we have the Colosseum Fire District, and then we contract with Colosseum Gorge Fire Rescue to provide services within that district. So, the way to fix that is to carve out that little section from the, the Colosseum Fire Department's area with an amendment, and in turn, do a contract with Savannah Fire Department to have them cover that area from the Jackson County side. The one issue that we dealt with, and this is not a money thing that Savannah Fire Department asked us for, but the. asked us for, but the, those folks are already paying a service fee for your fire protection. If you add the service fees together for all nine of those parcels, you're talking about three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents, give or take whatever the rate is that's set every year. So three hundred and fifty dollars and some change. So our recommendation was to do the amendment to the Colosseia contract and then turn around and do a contract with Savannah Fire Department to serve those folks and then turn, starting in July of next year, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars instead of giving it to the Colosseia Fire Department, give it to the Savannah Fire Department. We've actually talked to the chief of Colosseia Fire Department, who's talked to his chairman of the board. They are in agreements that this is okay, because there's no way for them to actually get there from the roads that they have in their district. So they're on board with this. So basically, Chester, I'll turn it over to you after that.
I've talked with the folks at Savannah. Again, it wasn't about money to them. They just, they wanted to be covered and welcome to do this, basically. And so as we looked at ways of doing it, this appeared to be the most equitable way of handling it. So there's two documents before you. One is an amendment to the contract for fire protection. That is with the Colosseia Gorge Fire and Rescue, Inc., to carve out that little section of the Colosseia District and pass it to the Savannah Volunteer Fire Department. The other document is a contract for fire protection. That is a document that would accomplish that with the Savannah Volunteer Fire Department.
One of the things that I want to make sure you're aware of, if you look at the contract for the Savannah Fire Department, it's almost a mirror copy of the contracts we have with our fire departments. However, there are certain things that we do that they don't do. As an example, the report of real fire conditions that we have in our contract that they have to report them to us. Jackson County departments don't report those to their fire marshal. So we excluded some of those sections in that contract. We didn't want them to have to, we didn't want to have our folks have to go inspect them for a class nine rating and then have Jackson County inspect them because they're contracted in that one area. So as long as they're in good standing with Jackson County, we're okay with provisional service. As long as they maintain a minimum of that protection class of nine, which they do, they actually have a class six.
This is what you ask out of this department, I would recommend. With that said, can we get a motion to approve the both items, Chester and Perry, of course? Do we need to do these separately, Chester, if we do them once?
I think it would be fine to approve them simultaneously, because if you don't approve them both, it's not going to work.
So you say? Then we approve them simultaneously. Motion, Mike Commissioner Bill, and second, Mike Commissioner Schiff. One item for discussion. Can we send Colosseia's fire chief a bill for fifteen thousand for Chester's expertise and your expertise?
I will be happy to deliver that message.
And you can take the cuss. All right, all in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren, for your head.
All right. Item 11C has been removed. Item 11D, Macon Transit Advertising Proposing. Transit Director Kim Angel. Officer Kim.
Thank you.
Board members, you have before you a Macon County policy on transit advertising. Ms. Angel will be speaking to you about that document that's before you.
I will, and I'm going to speak a little bit, and if you ask questions I don't have an answer to. For those of you who don't know my dynamic duo back here, my operations supervisor, Ryan Dunn, and the scheduler, Tommy Gilbert, they get the, lots of credit for working on this particular project. They did a lot of research and they put the documents together and then we sent them to Mr. Jones to vet them for us. So not asking for money, so let's all smile about that. So, you know, providing transportation services obviously is not cheap. There are a lot of variables that we go through. We don't know how much gas is going to cost. We're not sure what our insurance is going to be next year, you know, based on whatever claims are the year before. Demand tends to grow that. In order to meet demands, it often means that we're adding routes. And the routes don't drive themselves and the vehicles require gas on additional routes. So one action begats another. So one of the things that I'm required to do is, we have a success plan and it's brought to you for approval every year. And one of our items in our success plan for this fiscal year was to look at what kind of new revenue source that we could look at that may generate recurring new revenue without having to task our customers, our passengers, having to pay. So one of the things we looked at, we looked around the state and several of our peers are doing advertising on the sides of the vehicles. So we sat down in a staff meeting and said, and I told them, I said, "Guys," I said, "how are we going to do this?" I said, and I don't know, Ronnie, were you on the board when we did it years ago? We did it years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And had a third party involved in it and we had great big advertisements and they just really didn't look very well. And that was one of the things I said is, "I don't want to ruin the look of what we have." So the guys did some research and came up with these ads that we could do that are on vinyl adhesives on the windows. We searched for policies on, obviously, we had several conversations on, well, what if this business wants to advertise or what if that business wants to advertise? And I think Mr. Jones and I and my staff have had that conversation a couple of different times now. And we've worked very hard to put a policy together that we feel like would cover as well as we can be covered in order to advertise. They looked at the square footage and I don't think you have colored pictures on that. You probably should have printed more. But there are the colored pictures of these. So what I'm handing out to you is the ultimate goal in deciding to do this is some additional revenue. We realize it's going to take some time for the project to, obviously, for spaces to be sold and for businesses to start advertising with us. And we're hoping by the end of this fiscal year, if this project is approved, that at least ten percent of the space on those vehicles can be sold in ads. And then obviously, we won't be...
Is the initial fee for the sign?
There is.
The magnetic sign?
The way we have it set up, we're going to handle it in-house. And guys, y'all feel free to come up here as the direct member or jump up if I say something.
Vinyl adhesive.
It's a vinyl adhesive that goes on the windows. They're transparent. You can see out from inside, so it does not block that. And again, these are questions the guys are much better at. We will be soliciting for the advertising for businesses, you know, putting out the word that the space is available. It'll be handled internally. We'll ask the advertiser for a specific type of proof to give us of what they want in the ads. My staff will take it to a local graphics artist. They will design the ad. We'll give it back to the advertiser and they will approve the ad. And then we'll take it to print and my staff will actually be doing installation as well. There will be a, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollar cost per window as the, that's for the design, the setup, and purchase of the actual materials. And then there's a monthly cost associated based on the square footage of the window that they, the space that they would like. Right?
Six months, one year.
Six months and one year. So we have only two contract terms. They either have to advertise for six months or for a year. Chester, I think, worked on our contract. There is, in the back of your package is the actual contract with the advertiser.
This is a whole package. The beginning five pages is a written policy that the county, by its commissioners, would adopt to be basically the operating policy for this program. Exhibit A is the pricing list, and this is done by vehicle number. And so obviously, you're going, from time to time, be approached to do some amendments on the pricing as vehicles are retired or as the market suggests that advertising rates go up.
Right.
Exhibit B is an advertising brochure. And then Exhibit C is the actual form advertising agreement that would be utilized by Macon County through Macon Transit for the purchase and installation of this advertising.
Kim, is there an issue with the fed and grants, anything else receiving in that?
No. No, it is done in multiple other locations. I mean, I'm sure when you go on vacation, you see even the buses in areas that have rats on them. So, you know, this is viewed as a revenue source. We do have to report the revenue from it. But that's a quarterly report that we submit to DOT and DOT submits it to the fed. So we do report the revenue, but...
So does this money go through the county or go straight to Transit? When I write the check from Bill Construction, does it go to Transit or go through the county?
It'll come to the county. It'll have to be handled just like all other county monies. It'll go into the general fund. But it'll be incumbent upon...
It's past due money. Is it past due money, Warren?
It'll go into the general fund and it'll be up to Kim to sit down with our budget officer, the county manager, and work out how that money will be spent.
Because in the general fund, we'll set up a line item in my revenues so that each time we make a deposit to it, so we know how much it is. And, you know, every so often, or if we do really well, you know, we'll look at it and say, and then we'll end up having to do a budget amendment so we can disperse that out to the expenses.
Which will come back to the board, because it would be an increase in revenue and increase in expenditure. So you all would have to approve, you know, a spending of that new revenue source.
Mr. Manager, your thoughts?
I think this, you know, just, it goes to talk, what we talked about earlier during the service awards. I think, you know, this is a department thinking outside of the box, offering a way to enhance their service without the use of taxpayer dollars. And thereby benefiting the community by allowing our businesses to advertise. I think it's a great example of thinking outside of the box. I think it's a great example of trying to supplement revenue in the department. And I think you did a great job on this and would like to commend each of y'all also for the job you've done on this. And I think it, Mr. Chairman, I think it's excellent.
I do too. I think it's a good idea. You just have to be careful not to, like, Bill Construction and Cargo Lester Construction side by side. I mean, you'd want to separate it out.
We think you'll get a good price.
And actually, we had those conversations about the different, the competing businesses.
Yeah, you have to be careful about that.
You know, but the great part about managing it in-house is we can ensure that that's how it happens that way.
I don't think you have much, but I really think you're selling really good.
We really tried to start with some reasonable pricing. I mean, obviously, you know, when we get to ninety-five, a hundred percent, we're going to be at forty-four, forty-five thousand a year. So we're not, we're not trying to make this how we fund transit. It's how we help fund transit. And so we want the advertising to be available and affordable.
This is, you're in Chester, and this might be obvious, but I just got the document that I had off to you a few years, so I might ask a couple questions. In regards to who we are excluding, is all that people?
Yeah, I think basically what we are, what you are dealing with here is a First Amendment issue. And we have one, there's one case from the United States Supreme Court that makes it crystal clear that we can do commercial advertising. And I don't know if you've noticed, what we're really focusing on is doing something that is strictly commercial advertising and staying away from anything that might tend to make these vehicles public forums or limited public forums for a free speech standpoint. There are times and places for everything, and we have a public forum for free speech right on the courthouse sidewalk here. But not everything that the county owns has to be a public forum for free speech purposes. And I think the, what has been proven in other areas is if you open up this particular vehicle or these particular vehicles and make them a public forum or a limited public forum, then you're basically going to be in a situation where you're going to have a lot of public debate going on on the sides of your vehicles. And I think experience has shown that has not been good for the counties and municipalities who have had that.
So you feel like we're on...
I think, I think you're basically as good as you can be. First Amendment, obviously, is something that evolves with time. And so Kim will need to keep her eyes and ears open and I will need to keep my eyes and ears open for changes. One case could change everything.
Kim, looking at the pricing, there's different sizes by some of the vehicles going, but yet all have the same initial fee of a hundred and one five dollars.
Correct. That's basically an administrative. What that pays for is the actual vinyl itself offsets some time that my staff, you know, it's a setup fee is what it is.
I guess my question is, does that hundred and one five dollars actually cover your cost?
I think we can get pretty close, can we not? I mean, they, we threw some numbers around. But again, we looked at what other places we're doing and asked some questions about how do we derive that. You know, the guys know basically what the cost is. They went to several different graphics places. Hey, if we do this, what's going to be our cost for this type of material?
Did you ever consider maybe saving a couple of windows for nonprofits?
We talked about that today.
Maybe a donation, maybe not for six months at a time, you know, like a month at a time?
We really do not have that covered in this, in this agreement. And we can certainly, or in this policy, we can certainly look at that, but it is not in there. I think you need to understand...
That would be a positive for the transit.
I think it was actually in some of the examples that we had, right? It was addressed in a couple of the examples we had, just as a line in there that the transit reserved the right to advertise for non, and I don't know if it said nonprofit specifically, but there was...
The thing about that, when you start, will you put that...
And that's it. And then you do kind of, and that's kind of the, and the guys...
My advice to the county is to keep this strictly commercial. Once you get beyond, once you get beyond that, you're in uncharted waters.
Because you will be asked.
And that was the conversation that we had and, you know, and Ryan and Tommy looked at me and said, "Do you really want to do this?" So, yeah, it was definitely a conversation we had.
You'll be asked.
So in, I know you've talked to a bunch of other folks that have done this.
We have.
And going through this process, what's the negative? There's got to be, there's always a broken con there. What's a con?
I think you guys probably, probably...
Making or busting or rolling billboards.
You know, and we've... You know, and, and we, I, if I think there's probably one thing that's a little different that we're doing is than some of the others. Now, I think the first place you got, they manage it in-house, right?
Yes.
They manage it in-house. When I talked to my counterpart in, from Salisbury, they actually have a third party. So, there are some, some third-party people who handle it. So, you know, I think, obviously, one of the challenges will be that we're managing the entire program, and I do believe that's going to be a little bit of a challenge. I think it's going to be developing that process.
I think it's going to be a big positive for the county. There's a much greater incentive for the Director of Making Transit to get the decision right on what is appropriate to go on the side of one of those vehicles than somebody who's selling advertising and making, and making money on the volume of what they sell.
And again, you know, that's where I, I think Chester, when he says, "We're going to keep it, you know, commercial," and if, if I have that question, that will be one of the, the phone calls I'll make is, you know, "Hey, Chester, where are we with this type of ad?"
Yeah, I mean, until court system gives us more guidance and keep it commercial, I mean, the county's never utilized these vehicles for what's called a public forum or a limited public forum for free speech purposes. And as a result, they can, they can do this commercial advertising and limit it to commercial advertising. Once you start opening it up to the other, then there's all kinds of, you've opened Pandora's box, in a sense, from a First Amendment standpoint.
Let me give you an example. Jimmy Tate's running for reelection. Not Jimmy Tate Commissioner, but Ronnie Bill running for reelection. But he's going to buy every window that's available for Bill Construction, Ronnie Bill Construction, Tate, Jimmy Tate Landscape, and put on your bus. Is that legal?
It's of commercial purpose, don't you think?
Commercial business.
It's commercial.
It's construction and landscape. It doesn't say for Commissioner, so we're not out, you know?
But I'm saying, that's the little thing that's going on.
If there's anything in the proposed ad that suggests you're running for office, it isn't going to be accepted.
Right. Right, when, when you send the, the ad proof and it says, you know, "Vote for Ronnie in the corner."
Remember that.
You know, if it says, "Vote for Ronnie in the corner," we clip the corner off and keep going, but, you know.
You don't worry about that no more.
What you can do this is turn personnel, do an increase in personnel.
No, not at all. No, they, these two have promised me that they are willing to take it on, so.
I think that's the only negative, if, if you can say that's a negative, is we just have more responsibility.
True.
And no more money to do it.
But with us being such a small organization, we didn't need to look into.
I think you'll, I think you'll seven fifty every green.
We hope so. We, we hope those projections are way off.
Can we get a motion to approve the proposal?
Expressly approve this policy in its entirety.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
So, I think we should consider this for our police cars, our county manager's personal vehicles.
Yeah. We did start with propane, so we'll talk about that. So, I should send my staff to see each of you at your.
Make County.
Would you, like, want to give me your, who your marketing person is now, or you want me just to have them call your office?
We are.
January 2nd.
So, I can just give you a business card and you'll take it from there?
Absolutely.
Sheriff's Cars. Sheriff's Car.
Ambulance.
Ambulance.
There you go. Yeah, Morris is not here at the bench.
Fire truck. Save all kids.
Conversation.
Discussion of surplus property purchase offers.
I want to hear about that. Okay, gentlemen, we have received three offers for the purchase of various pieces of county-owned property from our surplus property website that we have that was created some years ago, actually, when Carl, I think you and I both were on the planning board at that time. We were at all this surplus property, put them on the website, and from time to time we do have offers arise. These are from a bidder would be Coast to Coast Group LLC. What I'll do is briefly hit on the bids for these three pieces of property, and then Chester has printed us out some, some rules and guidelines that we must follow should we decide to, to move forward with this.
You can save a lot of time. I'm making a motion to refuse all three.
Yeah, it's three, you know, the, the purchase, the requested purchase amounts, for instance, on 388 Bethel Church Road, that piece of property is, is tax valued at $47,380. We actually bought it for $55,000, and the proposed offer is $500 for that piece of property. Barnard Road, moving right down the line, Barnard Road is 3.25 acres, tax valued at $41,150 with the purchase amount here that this, that this group has stated is $250.
It's two-thirds interest for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, and last, but not least, is our Housing Department property on the old Murphy Road where our Housing Department is located, and that piece of property is two acres, the land value $225,000, building value at $52,170, and the, the purchase amount here proposed was $1,000. Nonetheless, I have to bring all these to you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to refuse all offers and return the deposits to those who made the offer.
All in favor? All in. Consent agenda, we're going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's something that someone would like to move in front of discussion. Have a motion to approve consent. Second, all in favor? We have appointments, one to the Board of Health, I believe it was the nurse spot I'm in correctly. Here we go, Ellen Cho, the Board of Health. I know there's three, I believe there's three spots open on the Board of Health right now, so if there are needed members.
The motion to approve Ms. Cho?
Motion to approve, you have a second. Second, Mr. Schill's all in favor? We have three seats on Economic Development Commission. It's like we have three applications, Roger Pendergrass, Mark.
Roger Clemens.
Roger Clemens, sorry. Roger Clemens, Mark West, and Corey McCall.
Corey McCall is the new member. He's a local business owner. Of course, Roger's been on the board, as has Mark, so I, I make a motion to approve the three members as, as they is on that board. Carl and I both agree on that.
Motion, second, all in favor? Need for a closed session?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would you briefly, potential property acquisition?
If there's a need for a closed session for the purpose of discussing possible property acquisition by the county, we can certainly go into closed session for that.
Okay, are you expecting the action?
No.
No, I, so move. Have a motion to come in, second, all in favor? There we go, here, are you slip behind me? Make a motion to adjourn? Second, my shields all in favor?
Motion by Higgins, second.